Okay, we'll open up the meeting of July 10th, 2017 at 7:00. Present members, Josiah Nezarella, Robert Dergan, we have...
Gerald Joy.
Miss Joy. Gerald Joy and Daniel Borsari, and Chairman Robert Gannon. Yeah, we're good. All right, why don't we do the correspondence and the bills off the court? Do we have... Please check bills. Plimpton Office Supplies, WB Mason, and Express Newspaper.
Would you like to motion to adjourn the bills?
What are we doing?
Motion to adjourn the bills.
We just pay the bills. Did you sign?
Bills paid.
All right, for mail, we have a notification to all departments dated June 16th, 2017, reorganization at their... From the Planning Board, at their meeting Thursday, June 15th, the Planning Board reorganized as follows: Chairman Gordon Andrews, Vice Chairman Carly Sculter, Clerk Mark Millius, member Lawrence Belcher II, and member Jonathan Soroco. We good? Is that it?
I think so.
All right, Daniel, are you sitting in for Peter tonight? Peter Parselen is on vacation.
Is he available?
Yes. All right, we still have some time. How about, let's do some minutes. How about minutes of the... You have Monday, June 12th, 2017. Anybody have any changes, deletions, corrections? How about accept a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, June 12th, 2017 as presented?
Motion to accept June 12th minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been motion and second, all to accept the minutes from Monday, June 12th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero to zero.
I was not here, so I did not vote.
Okay, all right.
Should be four.
Four to zero to zero. The minutes for Monday, June 8th, 2015.
I believe that's a... I'm not sure what that one is, but this one is an updated one?
Oh, from the corrections presented?
Yeah, it was requested that they be reworked out and resubmitted.
Okay, how about the minutes of Monday, June 8th, 2015? Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept June 8th, 2015.
And a second? Do I have a second? All those in favor of accepting the minutes of Monday, June 8th, 2015, who say aye?
Aye.
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 Four, zero, zero. And a revisit to the corrections made from the minutes of the Zoning Board of Appeals from Monday, December 8th, 2014. Do we know where any of the corrections were, or just...
It's going to be basically, um...
Chairman, take them.
Amendments right here.
Oh, the amendments on the 1, 2, 3, 4, page 5, which says petition 823 for Party Trust. You know what, I think we should hold off on that and reread them. And make sure, let's hold off on voting on those corrections from Monday the 7th, December 8th. All right, is this more correspondence from...
Yeah, that's in regards to petition 744, John Bahman and the Drucker.
Is that for later on anyway?
Well, she basically did not file. She did not get in the butters list, and there has been some correspondence back and forth to Mr. Huxson in regards to whether the special permit is still valid enough.
Okay, is that coming up on our agenda after thing?
Only as my respondents would certainly do visit it after.
All right, we'll do that then. We'll do that.
We have...
All right, what else do we have?
I'm pretty sure that's it.
What's that?
I'm pretty sure that's it.
All right, we're going to get started in about seven minutes. It's scheduled for 7:15. Okay, seeing that it's quarter past, close to quarter past 7:00, we'll open the meeting. We'll begin with petition number 868. Voting on this, where Peter is on vacation, will be the five members sitting here. The, here it is, yeah. Halifax, Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public meeting on Monday, July 10th, 2017, at 7:15 PM, in meeting number one of the Town Hall, 499 Plummer Street in Halifax, on the application by Gordon C. Andrews of 244 Elm Street, Halifax, Mass., on the administrative appeal from issuance of four building permits for 2, 4, 9, and 11, Amanda's Way, 264 Elm Street in Halifax. Said property is owned by Corey S. Merritt trustee. The party trust is shown on assessor's map 14 PCL 9, CW map 15 PCL 6 and 13, title reference, book number 29843, page 71. The applicant seeks to appeal the issuance of four building permits to the party trust of Pembroke to construct units 1, 2, 7, and 8 of Amanda's Estates pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 815, and the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Section 16719 and 16721A1, area zone residential, petition number 868. Mr. Andrews, how are you?
Good, everyone.
Would you like to speak to this, or do you have...
I have a attorney.
In your name, sir?
Chairman, for the record, my name is Gary Brackett. I'm an attorney with the firm of Brackett, Lucas, 19 Cedar Street in Worcester. And, Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if we may join you at the table? Or would you prefer that we just speak to you from our seats?
I'd prefer from your seat, that's fine.
Okay, fine. Mr. Chairman, just by way of background, I've been a public attorney for more than 40 years, having served at the city and town level. 11 years as town council in Watertown, 8 years as city solicitor in Worcester, 24 years in private practice representing cities and towns around the Commonwealth. I've been working with the zoning statute, Chapter 40A, the Zoning Enabling Act, since it was adopted in 1975. It's Chapter 808 of the Acts of 1975. So I just wanted to explain that to you in terms of my background, because when Mr. Andrews first contacted me about the issues that he had regarding this project, I evaluated them. We discussed several matters over the phone. He sent me documents, including minutes of the Planning Board and Zoning Board meetings regarding this project. And after careful review, I came to the conclusion that there were several issues that related to the current status of this project. And on that basis, Mr. Andrews had already filed a request for zoning enforcement to the building inspector. We were aware that building permits had been issued for four of the units consisting of two buildings on two separate lot slots, A and D. So I explained to Mr. Andrews that he has a right, not only under the general law, but also your zoning bylaw, to take an appeal from the denial of zoning enforcement to this board. He also has a right to appeal the building inspector's decision on the building permits to this board, each within 30 days. So we took those appeals. We set forth the information contained in our statements in support of each of the appeals. And, Mr. Chairman, with your permission on the board, I'd be prepared to address both of the issues, both the appeal of the building permits and the appeal from denial of enforcement belief, because they really are interjoint, unless you'd like me to take them separately, because I'll be making essentially the same argument on both fronts. The same reason that we're asking for zoning enforcement is the same reasons that we're submitting in support of our appeal from the issuance of building permits. And just at the beginning, what we're looking for, for relief, is a cease and desist order, having this board overturn the building inspector, or hopefully, the building inspector on his own choice, after hearing tonight's case, might decide to put a hold on the building permits and allow the applicant to go back and address the underlying issues that we believe caused there to be a serious defect in the status of this project at this point.
All right, why don't we begin with the application itself, as stated for the issuance of the four building permits, 2, 4, 9, and 11? Why don't we start with that one?
Mr. Chairman, I have an outline of factual chronology. I've made copies for all the board members. I believe that Mr. Huxson, Labor Counsel for the Towns, has signed in. I'd like to give him a copy, and I'm not sure if this counsel here for the property owner?
Yes, Mr. President, Adam Broadspire.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if everyone has a copy, we have to just walk through this. I'll just try to take a couple of minutes to the library. But I was hoping that this outline, and an outline of legal arguments, might be helpful for you and the board members, as well as...
Get the copy. Let me see if I can...
I don't have another. Oh, I'm here. I'm here. I'm sorry, I don't have one extra copy for the...
If we could give the building inspector a minute.
I'll give it one for now.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just start off with reference to the fact that on September 20th, 2012, there was a withdrawal of the application for definitive subdivision approval for this property. That application originally displayed eight lots on the property, and as early as the letter November 8th, 2010, from Michelle Hill, Secretary of the Planning Board, Mr. Kotowski from Webby Engineering was advised that the plan that was submitted was incomplete. It did not meet the subdivision requirements implied law. Further correspondence, on September 20th, 2012, the applicant for the property, Corey Merritt, formally withdrew the request for definitive approval before the planning. And by the minutes and the records of the Planning Board file, on September 20th, the Planning Board received the letter and allowed the withdrawal. The reason that that's important, Mr. Chairman, and for the first item on the chronology, is that the application for definitive approval was presented and withdrawn. And between September 20th, 2012, and the present, there's never been an application for definitive subdivision approval of the six lots, A through G, A through F, that are being developed, and the seventh lot, G, on the plan. The plans presented to the Planning Board and the Zoning Board show seven lots, which have never been formally subdivided by the Planning Board under subdivision approval. Now, the next reference I make, on September 23rd, 2014, the Planning Board granted site plan approval. Now, during the course of the Planning Board hearings on site plan, and, Mr. Chairman, I will acknowledge that under the case law of the Commonwealth, that an application for site plan approval is made, and if the application conforms to all of the requirements for site plan approval, a Planning Board has very little discretion, if any, to deny an application for site plan approval. They can generally approve it, or approve it with conditions to address any concerns. But in reviewing the minutes of the five Planning Board meetings that led up to the final decision, I'd like to just mention and highlight a couple of points, that the applicant acknowledged in his presentation on June 19th, 2014, that when the matter came before the Planning Board a while ago for definitive approval, it did not go through, as reference to the minutes. It states in the application for site plan that the road is going to be a private way. It won't be accepted by the Towns. I'd like to point out, Mr. Chairman, that there's a problem with that issue before the Planning Board on site plan, because under your own subdivision regulations, there's a requirement that says private streets are prohibited, but existing private streets will be approved only if they meet public street standards. The reason I bring that up at this point, Mr. Chairman, is the applicant is saying it's going to be a private street, but the applicant has not first gotten subdivision approval with a waiver of Section 235, subsection B, 7. And absent a waiver, there's a serious issue, number one. Do seven lots exist on that property legally today? My answer to that question is no. They've never been subdivided. What's proposed for site plan and special permit is a private driveway. Has the private driveway requirement, the prohibition against private driveways, ever been waived by the Planning Board as part of the subdivision plan? The answer is no. The minutes further state that the plan that was presented for site plan approval was essentially the plan that came before the Planning Board for definitive. The applicant was seeking approval from the Planning Board, but this matter was continued several times. And at the meeting on August 7th, the applicant made...
August 7th, when?
I'm sorry.
What year?
August 7th, 2014.
Okay.
At the meeting on August 7th, once again, these are all minutes that we secured from the Planning Board files, the applicant requested a continuance. The matter was continued. However, the board members had a discussion about multifamily requirements and site plan. And there was a review of the requirement for each building in a multifamily development shall be located on an individual lot with frontage. That's part of your zoning bylaw. 167-7D2 requires minimum size of a lot and continuous frontage. The lot size is 40,000 square feet, the frontage is 150. The Planning Board has responsibility for site plan, but the notation is made on April 7th, 2014. Approve with the notation, they will need variances. And it again states at the bottom of that paragraph, variances will be necessary. Now, that's a recognition by the Planning Board as part of site plan. That's what's being depicted on the site plan approval plan, does not have sufficient frontage. And, Mr. Chairman, if you look at the first attachment, after the Planning Board decision, I have attached the Planning Board decision to the chronology there. You'll see that in the bottom right-hand corner, number is one. And that decision of the Planning Board, September 22, 2014, states, "The second bullet, subject to all orders of conditions, approvals, special permits, variances, and requirements are met from all town departments." The last sentence above the signature, Mr. Bissarelli, "Please be advised that all variances of special permits shall comply with all the rules and regulations and codes of the Town of Halifax." And if you look on the next page, Mr. Chairman, there's a copy of the site plan. The site plan shows seven lots, A through F and parcel G. G is an unbuildable lot. So what's proposed is, at least first glance, is each of the dwellings is on a separate lot. Each dwelling will have two units for a total of 12 units as part of the multifamily proposal. However, they're shown in separate lots that, as of the time of this site plan decision, have not been approved under subdivision control. So, and of course, Mr. Andrews, as an abuger to the entrance drive, is clearly a party in interest, he's a party agreed by the issues that we're presenting tonight. And, Mr. Chairman, if I can also reference the minutes of the Planning Board leading up to this site plan approval. The final site plan approval was reviewed and approved and accepted with revision of new plans. And they approved, the Planning Board voted to approve the site plan with conditions, perenns, notations that they will need variances, et cetera, from the Zoning Board Appeal. So as of August 2014, almost three years ago, the applicant's being told at this continued hearing, that in the Planning Board's opinion, they need variances, at least from the frontage requirement, obviously, they have to inventory the other dimensional requirements. September 18th, 2014, I'm sorry, the continuation of the hearing, Mr. Webby from Webby Engineering was present. He's quoted as saying, "The board asked me last time to make sure every building, six buildings, each be put in its own 40,000 square foot lot." There's a reference there by the secretary to the board, referencing the fact that everything seems to be in order, other than getting the individual buildings on separate lots, which is a requirement. Mr. Webby, yes, these are all going to require variances, but what I was told by the board the last time, you could handle the site plan, but the appeals board would have to handle the variances. Mr. Webby, I think the only variance we're going to need is what they call the 150-foot frontage. There are 100 feet in the back line, the buildings are 100 feet away from each other. So, Mr. Chairman, the representatives of the property owner were present before the Planning Board. There was an open discussion during the site plan approval of the need for dimensional variances for the frontage, the need to have the six residential lots be individual lots. And, Mr. Chairman, I've been practicing municipal law for quite a few years. You cannot create lots, more than two lots, if they're not on a public way and they're not on an established subdivision road under Chapter 41, Section 81L, which is a definition of the subdivision under the subdivision control law. You can only create lots by creation of a subdivision road, approved as part of the definitive subdivision. So as of three years ago, there's no definitive subdivision approval. Just continuing with the chronology, Mr. Chairman, on January 20th, 2015, the ZBA granted the special permit, and they reference its land shown on assessor's maps, pages 3 to 6, which are part of the package that I gave you. If I can reference you to page 3 of the package I gave you, even the Zoning Board decision makes it clear that the applicant must adhere to the zoning bylaw regarding multifamily development. The special permit was granted to the applicant on paragraph 3 with the stipulation, the applicant's are within compliance of conditions set forth by remaining boards, committees, or departments of the town. Item 4, the special permit was granted on plans and testimony presented at the hearing. Any changes, whether substantial alterations to what was presented approved, must be brought back before the Zoning Board. It then goes on to say, "Please be advised that all variances and special permits shall comply with all the rules and regulations and code of the Town of Halifax." And, Mr. Chairman, the last two pages of that package reference assessor's plans 15 and 16, showing the three lots that make up the subject property. But, Mr. Chairman, those of the lots on the assessor's plans, those are not lots for the purposes of subdivision control, or for the purpose of complying with the zoning bylaw. Now, coming back to the front page in the chronology, Mr. Chairman, the applications for building permits were filed on November 16th, 2016. Mr. Chairman, under, I referenced the next item, January 20th, 2017. Under Mass. General Laws, the special permit expires within two years from the date of issuance, unless construction has begun. Now, Mr. Chairman, I raised that issue because apparently there was, may have been some work done on the roadway there, but the applications for the building permits weren't filed until two months before the expiration of the two-year period. And as you'll note, the building permits weren't issued until May 16th of this year, approximately six months after the applications were made. So, Mr. Chairman, included among the list of issues that I'm raising, these are legal issues, not factual issues. Included among the list of issues is the question whether or not the special permit expired for lack of dispensment of construction before the building permits were issued. And once again, that's an issue I'm assuming that the applicant's attorney, the developer's attorney, is going to respond to, because that's a question as to evidence that must be presented to determine whether that satisfies the standards under the Mass. General Laws and the case law of the Commonwealth. So the building permits were issued on May 16th. Mr. Andrews filed a request for zoning enforcement six days later, on the 22nd. And a request for zoning enforcement is a procedure that was included in the statute when the statute was amended in 1975. So it's been available to any person in town who seeks zoning enforcement from the building inspector. Two days later, the building inspector issued a denial of that request for zoning enforcement. And Mr. Andrews raised a number of the issues I've raised tonight about the fact that the lots don't have proper frontage. It's never been approved by a subdivision plan. The building permits should not have been issued. Frankly, when you consider the kind of checklist that one would require before issuance of building permits, the first question that comes to mind, and I assume the building inspector will respond, is there was six months between the time of application and the time of the issuance. My understanding on the 780 CMR in Chapter 143 of the general laws, which is the Building Code, State Building Code, is that normally a building inspector has to act within 30 days of an application for building permit. Here you have a six-month period. During the course of the six months, the two-year expiration from the January 20th, 15 special permit has expired. So when you add to the list of issues here, the fact that it never had subdivision approval creating the lots, the six residential lots, and you also have the expiration of the two-year special permit period, it raises a question, when Mr. Andrews filed a request for zoning enforcement, we take issue, obviously, by this appeal from the building inspector's denial, because these are all substantive issues that we're raising. On May 25th, I make reference to... On May 25, I make reference to a mortgage and conditional assignment of rents and leases recorded at Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. The interesting thing about this is that there's a reference in that conditional assignment of rents and leases to only two lots, A and D, of this supposed six-lot development. And I have a question about why it was incomplete. Town Council, Mr. Mayo, did provide a response to a building department inquiry. I had an opportunity this morning. I called Mr. Mayo, left a message, he called me back this morning, and for, I appreciated his return call. He mentioned that, other than that discreet request on the building permit issue and the question of the conditional assignment of rents, he had not been consulted about this matter. So I did, I wanted to extend to him the courtesy of calling him before coming tonight and indicating that he represented Mr. Andrews. When I've served as town council for my client communities, people have called me and just said, "I want to give you a heads up, I'm coming in tonight. If there are issues, we can talk after the meeting, or if the board takes under advisement, fine." So Mr. Mayo just indicated that was his sole involvement, was the email exchange that I can refer to later. And then the last two items, Mr. Chairman, are Mr. Andrews' appeal from the denial of requests for zoning enforcement and his appeal from the issuance of the building permits. Now, Chairman, if I can take a couple more minutes? I appreciate the board's patience in allowing me the extra time for this presentation. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to briefly outline some of the legal issues that involve, number one, as I mentioned earlier, the subdivision control law. Under Chapter 41, Section 81-L, which is part of the subdivision control law, under definitions, a subdivision is a division of attractive land into two or more lots. So anytime you're dividing land into two or more lots, you need definitive subdivision approval. If those lots already have frontage on a public way or an existing subdivision road, then you need to submit a subdivision. You have to show the road, the infrastructure, the lots fronting on the road, you have to meet all the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. And the next definition under subdivision control, the power of regulating the subdivision of land granted by the subdivision control law. 4181-U is the section that controls approval, modification, or disapproval of a subdivision plan by the planning board. And I realize that's not your jurisdiction, but in support of this appeal, that procedure was started and then withdrawn and never finished. And, Mr. Chairman, I would simply suggest that that is the foundation for the grant of zoning relief. If you're going to be building a multi-lot development where each residential structure of two units in each structure is on each of six lots, the starting point is you need subdivision control for the lots. Once that's granted, with or without waivers, with or without conditions, you then move to the next phase, which is special permit, site plan approval. Under the Zoning Enabling Act, Chapter 48, Section 9, that statute governs special permits. And this is language taken from the statute. "Zoning bylaws shall provide that a special permit granted under this section shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than two years, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date for good cause." So this clearly is a special permit for new construction. The statute says, "If you don't commence construction within two years, the permit expires." Now, Mr. Andrews has explained to me that he's been aware of certain work that's been done on the roadway, but no building permits for the buildings themselves. I took a ride on the road today. I noticed there's, apparently, there's one building that's framed, the first clause framed, there's another building for which a foundation's been put in. But that's only taken place since the building permits were issued on May 16. So there's a question about that two-year period, Mr. Chairman. The next section is the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw in paragraph A, and this is very critical, this, in terms of what's referred to as statutory interpretation, if something's expressed in general terms and specific terms, the specific terms usually control. Well, in your own bylaw, you've included that language. Where two or more requirements in this chapter are applicable to the same space, that which controls the greatest restriction on the placement of a building will control. And then in B in that section, "A dwelling, building, or any structure hereafter constructed in all ten A districts shall not be located on a lot having less than the minimum requirements, and no more than one dwelling shall be built upon any single lot except as herein after provided." And then also goes on to state that access to all lots shall only be through or across its legal frontage. Once again, this is a critical element of your zoning bylaw regarding dimensional compliance. No common driveways are allowed unless otherwise provided for in this chapter. So, Mr. Chairman, the only way you could vary that would be you'd have to file a petition for a dimensional variance if you wanted to use a common driveway, or if you wanted to allow access from other than the legal frontage. You need to file a dimensional variance in terms of your own bylaw. 167-11, the Table of Dimensional Intensity Regulations, in the AI district, 40,000-square-foot mammoth lot size, 150 feet of frontage. And the next section I highlight in the 167-12, density regulations for specific uses, I've attached those sections, Mr. Chairman. And then on the page, bottom right-hand corner, number three, the density regulations for multifamily development. And, Mr. Chairman, while going through them line by line, there's nothing in those density regulations that allows for any change from the 150-foot frontage requirement or the requirement that each dwelling be on an individual lot. So, one of the issues, I think, that the building inspector raised in his denial of enforcement relief was that, I believe, in his opinion, he feels that the grant of the special permit somehow overrides the underlying requirements that I'm raising for tonight. And I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, even your special permit decision recognizes the requirement to meet all of the other requirements of the town bylaws and will also include the subdivision regulations of the planning board. So the grant of the special permit doesn't wipe the slate clean as far as the issues that I've raised that should have taken place before then. Now, Mr. Chairman, I won't, I'll just take a moment or two and try to finish up now. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point. Wait until the response from the other party. I have the condominium master deed and the mortgage and conditional assignment of rents and leases that I mentioned earlier. And I do just want to make reference to the fact that when Mr. Andrews reviewed the files, Mr. Mayo did raise a question on April 12. At that time, the building permits had been pending for approximately five months, which he says briefly, as I read the condominium master deed, "The entirety of the property is not being immediately conveyed into or declared part of the condominium. Only Lot A and Lot D are being declared as part of the condo and built upon right now." In Master Deed Paragraph A entitled Creation of Condominium, it suggested that lots A through F on the site plan are being conveyed into the condominium, but that didn't happen. Lots A and D combined a total of only about two acres. The zoning board decision contemplated that all 12.52 acres would be conveyed into the condominium right away. But in order to build under the special permit and meet our zoning bylaw requirements, all of the acreage parcels A through F and Lot G must be used to create the condominium described in Exhibit A. So Mr. Mayo had issues even at that time regarding the condominium master deed, and I've raised issues regarding the mortgage and conditional assignment only relating to lots A and D. So there are multiple issues regarding how this project is being administered, Mr. Chairman, but I'll come back and finish on this point. This, we respectfully request that the board vote to grant Mr. Andrews' appeal from the denial of enforcement relief and grant his appeal on the issues of building permits. That relief would essentially be that the board would direct the building inspector once again. If he's willing to do so voluntarily tonight, then that's fine. If the board has to take a vote, we would ask that you vote to direct the building inspector issue cease and desist order on the work on the project and have him direct the property owner to go back to square one, apply for and secure subdivision approval. And under Chapter 41, Section 81-U, if you apply for subdivision approval, and if the planning board denies it for some reason, they have to itemize the reasons for denial. Then you have a right to come back and cure those issues. But if you do it right the first time, the planning board doesn't have to give you a list, and definitive subdivision approval would be granted. However, if the frontage on the lots is less than the required 150 feet, then the planning board's going to be faced with the same issue in 2017 that it faced in 2012, which is the lots didn't have the required frontage. So something's got to be changed with this plan. We took a look at the plans for the building permits, the four building permits that have been issued. Those lots don't have sufficient frontage by our calculations. And there's no grandfathering here. There's no subdivision plan that was approved that is on record at the registry that protects against an increase from 150 to 175, or 150 to 200 feet of frontage. So absent a filed subdivision plan at the registry, there's no grandfather protection, there's no compliance with subdivision requirements. So we'd request that the building permits be put on hold for cease and desist order and that the applicant who applied go back. If the subdivision plan is different than the site plan approved by the planning board and the site plan relied upon by this board, the zoning board, in granting special permit relief, then obviously there's going to have to be a need to amend the site plan approval and a need to amend the special permit. So everything is consistent and everything complies with the subdivision regulations. If the planning board is going to waive the requirement against private driveways, they have to do that by a recorded vote. There has to be a request for waiver as part of the application for definitive approval. But that's going to be an affirmative decision whether to grant the waiver or not. I'll defer to the planning board. Why did the planning board adopt that regulation? In the communities I represent as town council, some communities have as many public ways as they can deal with. They don't want to take any more responsibility because I've heard people at town meetings say, "We don't want to accept that private way as a public way. We can't take care of the roads we currently have in our inventory." So if there's a regulation against the status and if there needs to be some review of that, that has to be done by the planning board who adopted the original regulation. But what we're trying to do is get the house in order, Mr. Chairman. Do you understand property owner has constitutional rights to develop property? The town has constitutional rights to adopt subdivision regulations and zoning bylaws. And in this case, it appears as if we have a project that's ongoing that is not in compliance with your subdivision regulations, the subdivision control law, and your zoning bylaws. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, well, the way I look at it is, let's get right into it, all right?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone.
Your name, sir?
My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm an environmental and land use lawyer. My office is in Pingam, and I represent the Park and Trust. With me this evening are Amanda Monte, to my right, to the left, and Ed Johnson, and Joe Webby from Webby Engineering is also here, who was the project engineer. I have not had the luxury of time to delve deeply into this, having just been retained, and there's a long history.
Okay, well, pretty simple. Right up front, you heard several of the questions.
Yes, sir.
Is there a subdivision approval at this point in time?
But not required, sir. So let me, if I might, just to correct a few things. The special permit was dated, the decision was dated January 20, 2015. The certificate issued by the clerk's office, which would make the decision effective, was not issued until March 25, 2015. The site plan approval was originally issued on September 22, 2014, but was amended on May 7, 2015. Those facts haven't been presented, and town council will correct me, but I believe 48, Section 9, which formally provided a two-year period for the exercise of a special permit, was amended effective August 10, 2015, to three years. So there's no question that the work has been, and the permit has been exercised. There's a procedural issue here, and you don't even need to reach this past history because you cannot, two years after the grant of a special permit, and even longer, for site plan approval, essentially breathe life into a zoning issue that was addressed previously by this board. And so this is procedurally deficient. As you can appreciate, my clients rely on a special permit, which was not appealed. And I believe that Mr. Andrews participated in the public hearings, and all of these issues were addressed at that time. Cannot now, two years later, and several hundreds of thousands of dollars in construction costs, come back and essentially appeal through an enforcement request and a building permit request relief. And there are cases directly on point, and I have those for you, if I might, just briefly. Start with Bonfati versus Zoning Board Appeals of Holliston, which is a 1999 zoning board appeals case.
Could you give a copy to the building inspector also, please?
Oh, of course. So in this case, property owner actually obtained a special permit for a cluster development. There are questions regarding the frontage that were raised in the public hearings for that special permit. And as a result of those public hearings, the property owner was limited to only two lots which he could develop. But it was about a year later, he submitted a building permit application to the building inspector to construct a third lot. Essentially, he was trying to circumvent the conditions of a special permit by going around the zoning board appeals. That relief was denied. He then took an appeal to the zoning board appeals. That was denied, it was taken to the Superior Court. Actually, the Superior Court reversed the building inspector and said he could do that. However, on appeal to the appeals court, the prosecutor said, "No, procedurally, this is inappropriate," and they dismissed the case. They basically labeled this attempt at an appeal of a building permit, attempt to circumvent the issuance of the special permit and avoid the 20-day appeal period of the special permit, and ultimately dismissed the case. And this is a variation of what's happening to you this evening. And this is not a novel concept, and I'll give you another case. It's Sutola versus the Zoning Board Appeals of Cambridge. And admittedly, this is a trial court case out of the Superior Court. It has no precedential value, but you'll see a theme here. threw to seek, was granted a variance for an addition to his property. He basically lied to his neighbor. The neighbor had a problem with the proposed addition, the additional part of variance. He told the neighbor that they were going to remove elements of the project and asked the neighbor to... the neighbor to issue, just to sign a consent letter. And the neighbor, in reliance upon what was told by the property owner, actually signed the letter. The variance was granted. He went and built the project that he wanted. He didn't tell the neighbor that those elements had not been removed. And so, the abuser, upon seeing construction, found out about the issues with the building permit, asked the building inspector to issue a cease and desist order to stop construction. The building inspector refused to do that. There's an appeal. The zoning board appeals supported the building inspector, and it was appealed to the Superior Court. The Superior Court also dismissed that complaint. Basically, all of this occurred actually one year after the grant of the variance. And even under circumstances where ostensibly the property owner lied to his neighbor, the neighbor was barred from using the enforcement mechanisms to appeal a variance through this process. And that's essentially what's happening here. Mr. Andrews had his opportunity to appeal the issuance of the special permit and to its limited extent, the site plan approval. He participated in those proceedings. He chose not to appeal, and now, two years later, after my client has spent significant time and money, is trying to essentially appeal the issuance of the special permit, and it's categorically not allowed, black letter law in Massachusetts. With respect to the particulars, I probably don't know enough to intelligently talk to these issues. I know that Mr. Webby is here, but I do note that Mr. Bracken has provided you with extensive quotations from your bylaw, but he's cleverly, I'm sorry, that's not fair. He has omitted the relevant section, which you should look at, which is the specific use regulations that relate to multifamily development, and those are at Section 1677D2, which allows this board to grant a special permit allowing multifamily development in the ARB and C districts, and then goes into the requirements for doing that, including that a multifamily development complex shall locate each building on an individual lot which shall have continuous frontage on a public or private way. So, your multifamily development bylaw actually expands upon, in fact replaces, many of the general provisions that are found elsewhere in your bylaw. And it's my understanding that this board, when squarely facing this issue some two years ago, grappled with the interpretation of these provisions and interpreted these provisions sufficiently to demonstrate that the applicant had met its burden, that it showed that it had sufficient frontage on a private way that allowed this development to go forward. With respect to the word "lot" that appears in that, I think, Mr. Bracken, and again, I probably don't know enough to speak about this intelligently, is interpreting that to mean a lot for purposes of subdivision control. I believe that this board interpreted "lot" to mean something different in the context of this zoning bylaw. This is a condominium. Common areas are essentially owned by the condominium association. The units are owned by the individual unit owner, and I believe sometime during the permitting process, in order to show that there's sufficient area for each of the condominium units, the applicants were told to essentially show the phasing of the condominium. And so, I've seen plans that refer to those lots as phases, and I've seen plans that refer to those lots as lots. I can't speak to what happened two years ago. I wasn't involved, and I haven't had the benefit of looking at the record. You'll find in your file plans that show these, what we call "lots," referred to as phases. But I do note that this board examined those issues two years ago, interpreted its own bylaw in a manner that it thought was appropriate to issue a special permit, and granted that relief to the applicants, and they relied upon that to move forward. And I believe that that was also the opinion of the building inspector, that the building inspector also thought that that interpretation of your bylaw was appropriate. Candidly, it's not the best written bylaw with respect to multifamily development, but it's not my job to interpret it. This board's job to do that. With that said, I don't know, Joe, if you can speak more clearly to some of the technical issues. Unless you have a technical question.
Your name, sir?
I don't have any plans with you.
Your name, sir?
Just before I be... So, as I said, I haven't had a great deal of time to delve into, actually, which many years of history, I believe, this project was first proposed, late 2000s, early 2010s. And so, we're more than happy to do additional research if this board even wants to entertain the request. But as I said, it's simply a backdoor way to get around the 20-day appeal period for the special permit, and at that time, Mr. Andrews didn't exercise his right to do that.
Hi. I'd like to ask him some questions of, you know, you've heard both sides of this, Mr. Exton, and I think it boils down to, well, from my understanding, what's acceptable, what's, has been accepted as far as the legality of the road, of the private road itself, you know, does, in fact, the private way have to be registered as a subdivision control in order for, to establish the frontage? I guess that was my two concerns, my two concerns, I mean, any of the board members certainly, was, A, in the area of frontage, does it, in fact, meet the requirements of a frontage as applied for in the dates of times we've been talking about here?
Just for the record again, I am Richard Hucksam. I'm here as special counsel to the zoning board of appeals. So, I'm the board's attorney tonight. My firm serves as town council to several towns. I've only been practicing municipal and land use law for a little over 31 years, so...
So, you're new?
I'm a little bit new. Based on my review of this matter, I think there are really two fundamental problems, in my opinion. One is the 150-foot frontage requirement in the ARZ zoning district. The facts, as I understand them, indicate that that frontage requirement does not The issue of subdivision approval is really sort of a secondary or peripheral issue because if you look at the situation as the development lacking the requisite frontage, that the way that is most logical for the project to get that frontage would be to have a subdivision plan approved, where there would be a subdivision roadway which would create the requisite frontage. That is the way that this is, that frontage is usually created, other than the situation where you can have an approval not required plan, where the lots shown on a plan already have the requisite amount of frontage on a public way or another acceptable kind of way. So, in this situation where the facts, as I understand them, indicate that the project development parcel only has about 74 feet of frontage on Elm Street, that does not meet the 150-foot frontage requirement. And so, the discussion about this compliance with subdivision control law and waivers under the subdivision control law, I understand it's logical, but it's a little bit, it's jumping ahead a little bit because that, it's only relevant in that that is the most logical way that the requisite frontage would be created. So, in terms of some of the other issues, in my opinion, the special permit did not grant any sort of waiver or relief from that frontage requirement. The special permit granting authority, in my opinion, can only grant that sort of relief, whereas zoning bylaw specifically grants that authority. And not only does the Halifax zoning bylaw not grant it, but it specifically says that the grant of a special permit is only permission for the use, in that it doesn't give any kind of dispensation or waiver or whatever term you want to use regarding other requirements of the zoning bylaw. So, in my opinion, the grant of the special permit did not waive or dispense with the requirement that the development comply with that 150-foot frontage requirement. In terms of some of the other issues that have been raised, the issue of lapse of the special permit was not raised in the appeal, and that factually, I don't think we have the facts to make a determination about that. It's a fact-intensive inquiry, what kind of reliance has been made upon that, and there has been an amendment to the state statute that increased it from two to three years. So, I think that's, I don't think that the board could make a determination on that because, one, it hasn't been, well, it wasn't raised in the appeal documents, and two, the factual basis for that has not been established, in my opinion. There's another fundamental problem, in my opinion, with this proposed development, which is the one building per lot, which is, in my opinion, clearly stated in the zoning bylaw, and under the facts, as I understand them, this is one big lot. It has not been divided up into separate lots. And again, we get back to this subdivision control or subdivision approval issue, which would be the logical way to create individual lots through the approval of a subdivision plan, which the facts indicate that has not occurred. So, that, in my opinion, that's another, the second fundamental problem with this proposed development, that it doesn't comply with that. And again, I don't think any, in my opinion, neither the special permit nor the site plan approval gives any kind of waiver, dispensation, relief from that requirement similarly to the, to the frontage requirement. Again, it's, there are some very clear statements in the zoning bylaw that the grant of a special permit does not do anything but give permission for the use, and that other applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw still apply. Those are the high points. I haven't had a chance to read the case law that Mr. Brodsky has. Excuse me, but I guess I will say that the issue of, you know, not appealing the special permit within the 20-day appeal period, that would just go to, you know, the legitimacy of the special permit, and I think that these, in my opinion, the grant of the special permit did not give any kind of dispensation from complying with these other...
What about the appeal itself of the building permit? Would that, would, again, that be covered under the fact that it was not appealed under the original 20 days for the special permit, or, because that, that is the application in front of us, is the appeal of the building permit?
Right. You know, that's another issue that was not raised in the appeal document that was filed with the board. I'd really like to have an opportunity to look at that, that issue, sort of like the lapse issue. Those were not raised in the appeal as it was filed with the board, so, you know, I'd like to have an opportunity to look at those before expressing any really full opinion on them. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any of the other board members have any other questions of Mr. Huckson?
Just trying to give it all in the air.
Yeah, I know. It's an awful lot to absorb there. Brod, how about yourself? Any comments of what was presented, feelings, opinions?
I've made my decision. Let the lawyers discuss their sides and make a determination based on what you feel.
Okay. I personally, just myself, I would like to have that opportunity to have Mr. Huckson review that. I'd also like to hear a reply, you know, to those three areas that Mr. Huckson just, you know, brought forward to explain.
Yes, sir.
Or how you feel you can waiver from requirements of the bylaws that if, in fact, you know, you feel the special permit was able to do that. We do need that. And did you have something?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, just to respond at one point regarding the issue of the two years, I have the statute here. The 14th paragraph was effective until August 10, 2016. The special permit was granted on January 20, 2015, and that provides the two-year provision. It was amended on August 10, 2016, effective going forward prospectively to increase it to three years. But at the time this special permit was, I'm sorry, at the time the special permit was granted, there was a two-year limitation. There's nothing in the three-year amendment that makes it retroactive. So, I just want to counter the issue that the two-year issue has been wiped out by the three-year amendment. The three-year amendment applies prospectively from August 10, 2016 forward, meaning special permits granted after that time. And, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the two cases that were cited, I'm sorry if I got the spelling correct. Yeah, it's attorney, excuse me, Mr. Brodsky?
Brodsky. B-R-O-D-S-K-Y.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Mr. Brodsky raised the two cases. This is not a backdoor attempt to try to appeal the site plan approval of the special permit. This is an issue that goes to the core question, which Mr. Huckson has already addressed, the requirement for frontage, the requirement for individual lots. So, I've already acknowledged that the planning board under Mass. Case Law, Prudential versus Westwood, is a leading case. Planning board cannot deny site plan approval. And if Mr. Andrews came to me and said, "I want to appeal site plan approval," the first thing I'd say to him is, "Appeals of site plan approval are very limited in scope. We have to prove that the board didn't have a complete application when it made its decision." So, we're not appealing site plan approval, and this is not a disguised attempt to appeal the grant of the special permit by this board. As I said before, what we're trying to do is correct this process, so if the development goes forward as allowed under your zoning bylaws, it's done correctly with the proper foundation, which is subdivision approval. And I understand Mr. Huckson and Mr. Brodsky need time to review these, and certainly we're willing to give the board the time it needs to receive the input from special labor, land use council, and any further input from Mr. Brodsky. The one question I would raise, Mr. Chairman, is this is going to be continued to another hearing. I would renew my request that the building inspector voluntarily ask the builder to stop work on the site until the board can address this matter.
Are they working on the site now?
So, that's, as I say, that, I realize that this board is going to be taking the matter in advisement, so you're not going to be issuing a directive to the building inspector to issue a cease and desist. I'm just suggesting that rather than continuing the route down the road, I understand that developers have construction contracts, I've negotiated construction contracts from my public clients, I'm aware of the language that is involved regarding interruptions in work, things of that sort. But the question is, during the period of time it's going to take for this board to review it, should the work be continuing on putting up the buildings there? If there's going to be any revision to the configuration of those lots because they have to meet frontage, or they get a dimensional variance from this board on a frontage requirement, then before we start putting any more foundations, then it would seem to make sense to have the work come to a halt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just a couple of quick points. My client presently has a valid and effective special permit, which they are exercising, and they have a legal right to do that. One of the additional amendments to 48, Section 9, was even in the event a special permit is granted and an appeal taken, that the developer is still allowed to proceed with development at his or her own risk because the legislature and the governor recognized that too many special permits were being appealed by abusers for insubstantial reasons. And so, the statute was changed. So, it's a business decision whether my client wants to proceed during this interim period, but this board, I do not believe, has any legal authority at this point to order my client to stop work, and I can't speak for the building inspector, he has authority.
Mr. Huckson?
I agree with Mr. Brodsky in terms of the Mass. Zoning Act was amended a few years ago to allow special permit holders to go forward in the face of an appeal at their own risk. But in terms of any work that requires the building, the building permits, those are under appeal at this point, so I don't...
So, how is the work progressing without a building permit? If it hasn't been issued?
I'm sorry?
I said, "How is the work going forward if the built, the building permit itself is under appeal?" And it has been issued as of this date.
Correct.
Only a certain number. Not all of them.
Not all of them.
Okay, that would be my next question, if...
So, the burnt building permits are... So, the burnt building permits that have been issued, the foundations are in the ground.
For lots, which ones?
If they're willing to be in jeopardy, they are already in jeopardy. So, any other permits that would come forward after that?
For any additional lots, had they not been...
For any additional buildings.
So, we're not increasing the...
Not at this point.
The problem.
Not at this point.
Okay. How do you feel about that?
Well, in my opinion, any work under these building permits that have been appealed should not continue because they're subject to appeal, those building permits. Any work that requires those building permits to be done should stop because they're subject to this appeal.
Only if the appeal is decided against the applicant.
But it's, the appeal is currently pending.
Right.
So, they're not, in my opinion, they're not effective building permits at this point.
If they're under appeal?
Yes.
How do the board members feel about that? Gary?
So, if the building permit is under appeal, they should not be doing work?
Under the building permit that's under appeal, yes.
We don't have the authority to say to stop, right? We can't tell them to cease and desist? Isn't that what you guys say?
Well, I'm saying if the board is going to decide that there's validity to these arguments and, you know, grants their request for relief, then our building permits are ineffective and we can't do anything further. I clearly can't speak to case law on the effectiveness of a building permit under appeal. That's something I'd like to look at. I can speak reasonably intelligently about the effectiveness of a zoning permit under appeal because that's governed by statute. I can't speak off the top when I had retrospective effectiveness of a building permit. I'm not suggesting Mr. Huxton is incorrect, but I'd like an opportunity to look at that. But this board hasn't rendered a decision one way or the other. Again, we think that this appeal is procedurally deficient, shouldn't even be entertained.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly on that point.
So, what are you saying then, bottom line is, just because of the fact that it's under appeal, basically suspends the building permit? Is that how you...
Do we have the authority to suspend it?
It's not suspending it. Well, I guess it is suspending it. I don't know what else you would call it.
Mr. Chairman, I just, if I can repeat what I said earlier, I understand the board hasn't rendered a decision. So, I agree with you, sir, that through you, Mr. Chairman, that the board doesn't have the authority to suspend. That, I think that responsibility is within the building inspector under 780 Code of Mass. Regulations, which after 143 of the general laws, he supervises building permits. We have an issue, frankly, I'm aware of having represented builders to get a building permit. If they're concerned about any neighborhood concerns, they wait 30 days, no appeal, they begin construction. Now, I agree that the special permit under the provisions to 48, Section 9, a party can proceed at risk with a special permit if that's under appeal. We don't have an appeal in the special permit. But we do have an appeal within the 30 days of the building permit. I'm not sure I understand Mr. Brodsky's question about the procedural irregularities of our appeal. They were filed in a timely fashion. They were filed in 30 days of the building permit, 30 days of the denial of enforcement request. There's no procedural deficiency in our appeals. The question is, the building inspector, I believe, has the authority. I don't believe the board can order him tonight because you haven't rendered a decision. If, when you do render a decision after Mr. Huxton's input, Mr. Brodsky's input, hopefully my response, if you decide to grant our appeal and overturn the building inspector's denial of zoning enforcement, overturn the issuance of building permits because there are no separate lots and no proper frontage, well, then, yes, you, by your decision then, would basically be reversing the issue of those building permits and the builder would have to come to a halt. Even if the builder took an appeal, our position would be they would have to seek conjunctive relief against the town for enforcing because their appeal would not stay, the cease and desist of the building permits. So, I come back to my point. I think the discretion is within the building inspector to render a decision on the status of the building permits. And if building is at risk under the building permits, that's not protected under the special permit statute.
Any other questions, comments? Because I think it boils down to whether or not we decide to allow the proper amount of time, you know, for all parties' representatives to do the research that they've been asked and asked the board to give them time to do. And in the meantime, have to decide whether or not, my opinion, if I, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that basically it comes down to two things. We have to decide whether or not, as a board, we have the authority and the right to issue a cease and desist or do we allow the builder to continue, as Mr. Huxton said, at his own, at their own risk, knowing that the appeal is in effect and it could very well nullify the building permit? Yes, no?
On the special permit, there's no question that there's that proceeding at your own risk, although the special permit has not been given. Here we have building permits. In my opinion, the validity of the building permits is under, is at issue now. I don't think they have the authority to go forward under the building permits right now because they're subject to appeal. I don't know of a provision that says that you can proceed with, under, at your own risk under a building permit that's under appeal.
Oh, that would be strictly on the special permit basis?
So, I think that they should not be doing any work under the building permits that are under appeal right now while they are subject to this appeal until a decision's been made by this board.
Okay.
Is he talking about the permits for A and D?
Right, there's only two lots that are on the...
That's A and D.
Is it A and D?
Just the ones that are subject to this appeal.
A and D.
A and D.
And my understanding is that the town does things a little bit differently. The town actually issues a foundation permit to allow you to put your foundation while the building permit is proceeding to be processed and then subsequent building permit is issued after the foundation is...
I have the ability to issue a foundation permit. That's not to the town, that's through the state code.
Which was done.
Which is done. What phase of construction are you under now? What would you be proceeding with, I guess, is my question?
Framing, septic system.
Of the second...
The first unit has...
Has been framed?
The first, the first building has first and second floor decks, framed foundations, obviously, septic tanks installed, the foundation, the concrete floors in the garages and in the basement have been poured.
Now, is that lot A?
That's lot A.
Okay. What about D? Where are you with D?
On lot D, the foundation's been poured.
Aspilts been done, Rob?
Yep.
The asphalt is done?
Aspilts on both of them have been done and submitted to the town, to the building department. Then, then they actually gave me the building permits, you know, to move forward.
When were those issued? What was the date on that, on those issuings? Rob, do you know what the topic is?
I don't have any information.
I have...
Building permit issued, it's May 16th, Mr. Chairman.
Issues, filled with four building permits, May 16th, 2017.
I think that was the first phase.
Maybe it should be on the other one. Yeah. She moved that back.
And on D, like I said, the foundation's been backfilled. The septic tanks have been installed and what you feel is under construction.
How does the board feel, gentlemen?
I mean, if the building permit is under appeal, is there a law or something that we can say, "Yes, you cannot build, you should cease"?
In my opinion, it's not a valid building permit, it's subject to this appeal. One's under subject to this appeal.
Is that a statute somewhere? How we can...
I mean, this is a big undertaking for the owner of the property. It's been five years. In the five years, nobody caught this mistake. And now, we're hanging this guy up for building, he already issued building permits. And he's spent a lot of money on this, on this project. And to stop it and say, "You can't do this"? Maybe it's a technicality. I don't know. You know? I'm not the lawyer here, but to stop this project from going forward...
That's the rationale of those decisions, if you can't do it.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't this way. I wouldn't insist on it, to tell you the truth.
You what? I'm sorry?
I wouldn't possibly insist on it. It's been five years.
What's being appealed?
And engineer and all the other stuff. I mean, from 2012...
Right, but May of 2016 is when the building permits were issued. His first request for violations was 5/22.
The planning board accepted it, the zoning board accepted it. The building inspector accepted it.
When were the...
When were the foundations, previous before the May 16th or something?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I might, if we were building something different than on the approved plans, I could see the board and the building inspector taking action to stop the development because what's being constructed is not consistent with the permits. We're building exactly what has been permitted, but the abuser's questioning the underlying permits. And I, you talked about frontage two, three, four years ago. This is not a new issue and the issue was resolved at that time. That's the whole problem with this process of using the enforcement and the appeal mechanisms to get at these underlying issues that were resolved years ago, which is why I'm saying that's why the courts dismiss them. So, that's why I'm also suggesting it's not appropriate to have us stop building. Again, if we're doing something different than what's on the approved plans, I think the board will be in a better position. But we're doing what we were prepared to do. And why should we bury the brunt of what may be a frivolous appeal?
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, Mr. Andrews has reminded me that he's raised these issues in the past. If you go back to the hearings before the planning board, the question of variance relief and frontage was addressed before the planning board at the time of the site plan review, but the planning board was limited in terms of its scope. They said to the applicant, "You need to have each dwelling on a separate lot. The lots have to have the required frontage." So, to come back to Mr. Brodsky's question, he's building according to the plan that's been approved. The plan that's been approved doesn't have legal frontage under your zoning by law. And there, if I may finish, Mr. Brodsky, it doesn't have frontage and they're not on individual lots. Your own special land use council has advised you of that issue. They're not on separate lots. You have one lot there, making up the three lots shown on the assessors plan that I attached to my chronology. So, you know, this is, this is an illusory attempt on the part of the property owners' attorney. He's somehow suggesting these appeals are frivolous. Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't be driving down here from Worcester and representing Mr. Andrews in these matters. I would have said to him at the beginning, "There's no basis for your appeal of the building permits or the enforcement relief." I would have said that to him straight out, saved him the time, and I'd be home this evening watching the seven o'clock news. But, Mr. Chairman, these appeals are not frivolous. They're based upon the record. I've gone through the record of the zoning board meetings that were held on this, starting on December 18th of 14. And Mr. Brodsky suggests these issues were addressed and resolved. These minutes don't reflect that. I've gone through and highlighted them between now and the next meeting. If he's going to suggest this board, a previous composition of this board addressed and resolved the frontage issue, then I guess he'll review them. That's the same way I do.
Okay, let's, let's look at the, I think, at the two issues. First one, in my assessment, first one is entertain a motion that we continue this hearing until our next meeting in August, at which time all three representatives can submit, you know, their opinions and proposals to resolve the situation. I think that would be the first, though, you know? Number two, we have to decide, and I would accept the motion, on whether or not to suspend any further construction on the site or allow the permits issued and the work that is acceptable under the permits that are issued to continue on the property until our decision made at the next meeting or, again, suspend, cease and desist all construction of the property.
I think he should continue at his own risk. I don't think we can issue a cease and...
Attorney Huxton did say there's no such thing as continuing at his own risk under the...
But you also say there's no law saying otherwise, correct?
You know...
It's just your opinion.
It's just my opinion, yeah. The building permits are under appeal, you know?
That's what we're reviewing.
To say that there's no difference between a building permit that is issued and the 30-day appeal period goes by and the, and the builder builds under that and a building permit that is appealed to the Board of Appeals within the 30 days makes no sense legally to me. These are subject to appeal. They're under appeal. They're before the board and the validity is in question and the board will make a decision. In my opinion, they're not valid to proceed under.
Okay, first one, I'll accept a motion to continue the, this hearing until our next meeting of August. Do I have a motion?
Motion to continue this meeting until August, the date.
And do I have a second?
Second.
It's been motion and second. I'll call for a voice vote.
Mr. Chairman, can I...
Hold on. Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just procedural matter. The continuing, since this is a public hearing, the continuance should be to a date and time and place certain.
Yes.
August 14th.
We should do that, yes, okay. What is it again?
August 14th, 7:15.
August 14th.
At 7:15.
At 7:15 will be time and date certain.
And this is a petition before we go?
Certainly.
Is there a plan to eventually subdivide these lots?
We need to evaluate all of what's been said tonight. It's the first time we've heard these arguments, so I don't think we're at any, any position to comment on what we should be doing in the future. I don't mean to disrespect them, I just...
So, I guess my problem I'm having right now is everything they were giving permission for was on the condition that they were going to follow all the bylaws and the rules in zoning and they didn't. Now, how that slipped through, I don't know. But, you know, if we're going to know that things are going to be made right, you know, I would feel better about it. So, right now, we're not even getting an answer that we're going to subdivide it. So, where do we stand?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, there were no conditions in the special permit that said, for example, this permit is conditioning you upon you getting subdivision control approval of the road. Again, if we had a permit and a condition that we violated, I can understand that. We have complied with all of the requirements and the conditions in both the site plan approval as well as the special permit. It's been suggested that there was a new condition that, you know, should have been imposed two years ago, so...
So, your subdivision approval, you don't feel is necessary or have been necessary?
I don't know the answer to the question because I'm digesting a little bit of information as to frontage. I'd like the opportunity to speak with town council so I can understand his reasoning.
If I could just make a brief note, this is more of an observation. I mean, in my experience, just back up a moment, the plan, as I understand it, the approved plan and the plan that I looked at on the registry website, all shows what looks like a subdivision roadway with a name and lots. And this is a situation where there's been no subdivision approval. I'd just like to say that that, in my experience, is quite unusual.
There's also a plan recorded that shows the property divided into phases and those phases seem to correspond with the lots. So, there's a, there is confusion regarding the plans of record, which I agree. I'd be happy to show you that plan also.
We're going to need that for the next meeting.
Well, that's what I'm asking right now.
I'm talking about the one that I looked at on the...
What's, are they going to subdivide? What's the phases? Is that, is that part of the phases?
The phases were required for the condominium. Again, the idea was that this is going to be one condominium owned by a condominium association that is represented to me, the landowner, as common area, and then individual units. And it was, I believe, phased for purposes of bank financing for construction, which is pretty typical. And that's why you see in chain of title, a master deed and condominium documents, because that's how it's going to be structured for ownership purposes. But I think your question is, is do we need a...
Why does it show it as individual lots?
I, from reading the record, I believe at one point, I don't know if it was the planning board or the zoning board, there's a request made... planning board or the zoning board, there's a request made to Webby Engineering to please label the plan to show lots, so you could make sure there's sufficient area for each of the buildings. That's, I believe, from...
And the building permit, Rob, was specific to lots A and D, as indicated on a site plan? Okay. All right, well, there is a motion on the floor. It has been seconded to vote to continue the meeting until date and time certain, August...
August 14th at 7:15.
At 7:15 PM, at which case, again, each representative would, would submit to the board, uh, views and opinions on, on compliance.
Mr. Chairman, do you want those submitted prior to your hearing, to, in exchange of information, say one week prior, so that...
That would be, yes, that would be great. The board feels that way also.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take a voice vote. I'll start, Kasai?
Yes. Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, it's continued to 5-0-0, until date and time certain, August 14th, 7:15 PM.
And that is petition 868.
Yes, please. Could I also ask the attorneys, we went before you leave, if you could leave a business card with, with Terry, so we know how to contact you in, in the, in the event? Okay, number two, I'd like to entertain a motion on whether or not to allow the, the building permit to remain in effect where construction of the site for lots A and D can continue on. I think that's, or, should we leave it at that? And that way, we could vote yes or no, or whether or not. Of no vote, a yes vote, of course, would, would allow it to continue, and no vote would, would suspend the building permit and construction of, of the site until the matter is resolved.
Make a motion to continue, to have the permits continue, until next meeting.
Have them in effect, remain in effect where construction can continue on the site, at the, at the builder's risk, is what...
He's already got the permit. There's no risk right now, right now.
Yep.
We don't know what the, what the outcome is.
All right, there's a motion on the floor.
I'll second.
And it's seconded. Any questions, opinions, feedback? Okay, I'm going to go, call for a voice vote. Kasai?
Yes. 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 Yes.
And I vote no. So, it passes 4 to 1 to 0.
Mr. Chairman, just one point of clarification. The continuous to August 14th is on the two matters, the appeal to building permit and the appeal on enforcement. The requests, frankly, as I mentioned earlier, basically merged.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I'd appreciate if you could leave your information with, with Terry.
Thank you.
I know. We don't accept business cases.
Great, Kate, you got it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I don't, I don't catch my breath on that. We're going to take a recess for about five minutes.
Yes, five questions. Terry and I, do you have any information on the application?
Yes.
On the letterhead, I'm happy to send you an email about my...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Good night, gentlemen. Thank you.
Good night.
Huxman, have you? I'll get you a card. I'll try to send you some cards.
In here, where are we, uh? Are we doing something with, uh, the permit process for, uh, what's your name? Come.
Harman. Chote.
Chote, slash.
It is on your left-hand side of your folders. In the middle there, there you go. Highlighted in orange.
I think she's out there.
All right, what are we doing? Jennifer Harman, here we go. May 31st, 2017. Dear ZBA, this is Jennifer Chote of 700 St. Halifax. I'm reaching out to you in regards to the upcoming June 12th, 2017 ZBA meeting. In 2015, June 8th, I met with the board for petition 744, and at that time, I was asked to return and to notify the zoning board of appeals to be put on the agenda. At this time, I would ask the board to consider a continuation for this meeting in regards to my special permit, quote, kennel for breeding and boarding of dogs, petition number 744. At this time, my property is actively on the market for sale, as well as I have been engaged along with the board's counsel in a lawsuit in land court with Mr. Scott Claussen. I do not feel at this time it would be appropriate to have my petition before the ZBA. I also would ask that this be continued until either the sale of my property or the conclusion of the lawsuit with the board, myself, and Mr. Claussen. I appreciate your time and consideration of this matter. Please advise Jennifer Chote.
Yeah, she did come in for that meeting, and we advised her to get in the butters list so we could re-advertise. She did not. So, we did go out to town council to find out if the special permit is still in effect.
And the question now becomes, is, does the special permit have a date and time certain of its expiration? I believe it does...
I'd just like to start this out with, um, what I would advise the board is that in light of this pending litigation that directly relates to these special permits, I would advise you to take no action before consulting with Attorney Salon, who is handling the litigation.
Oh, that's right, too.
The litigation.
It's your office, but it is...
She might want to meet with you in executive session, pending litigation.
It's a good idea.
Something that you do could have an effect on the litigation. I, I would strongly advise you to consult with, with her before taking any action.
Okay. That being said, do I have a motion to continue this hearing until advised by town council, Mrs. Salon?
Technically, in a hearing, though?
It's a meeting, not a hearing, right?
So, we don't have to motion for anything?
It doesn't hurt, but just, it is, it's not a public hearing, to my understanding. It's a meet, just a meeting.
Motion to continue discussion?
That's fine. I just wanted to make that, that note.
Until litigation has been resolved. How's that? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion till we continue the discussion at a future date, until the litigation has been resolved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.
Did you second it?
No.
Thank you.
You seconded it.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Roy. So, nice to see you.
Well, lovely to see you. I would respectfully request that I be involved on that meeting, that, that your, your office please contact me to make sure that I'm aware of when that meeting takes place. We have, in our office, Boris Lekman, we see a complaint again of excessive dog barking.
From where, Mrs.?
From Mr. Claussen.
Okay.
I did verify that there was some barking. I had been over there, and I had spoke to another neighbor who has confirmed that there is barking early in the morning. And so, we're going to, you know, start that up again. So, I just want to be able to be kept involved.
I had been made aware also that, I guess, the animal control officer has been having a problem trying to get onto the property?
Yeah.
Is that still, or has she finally been able to?
She has...
Between vacations and everything else, I know there was a...
She had somebody that was ill, so she had to go away. But, yeah, so typically, an inspection is an inspection, and we don't typically make an appointment for that, because it's a spot inspection to make sure that all is well. So, Noreen had attempted on several occasions to visit the property. Now, the gate is locked. She attempted to leave messages for Ms. Chote, but her mailbox was full. And I know that Alana had kind enough to forward me an email from Ms. Chote, saying that, you know, she hadn't heard from Maureen. The reason why is that she can't leave a message for the phone network. But she has, she had made several attempts to inspect the property, and so we are addressing that separately.
Oh, okay, so it hasn't been, hasn't been done to date?
We're hoping that it will be, it will happen any day. So, um, yeah.
Certainly, if we have any contact, and, and also if the selectmen do have any insight as to when the matter may be resolved, we would appreciate some kind of notification on the board also.
I will let you know now that we will probably hold a dog hearing two weeks from tomorrow. So, if any members would like to come.
Did she send an email to the, to the zoning board that the house is on the market and it was sold?
Um, I, I don't know. I heard hearsay that it was sold, and I heard it had fallen through, but this is all hearsay?
She said that, but she'd be out of there by August?
Um...
August or October?
I, I believe that the original date was August. And again, this is all hearsay. I don't know what's true and what's not, because we haven't seen, I don't think that you ever received a couple of any purchases and sales. I know somebody had inquired on the property just a few days ago, and they were told that that particular sale had fallen through, but I don't know how true that is.
It's, I see it's reactivated.
Oh, it's back on the market? Yeah, yeah, so...
So, it hasn't been sold yet.
But then somebody, yeah, but then I, but how soon did you see that it was back on the market?
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, but then somebody inquired that it might be off the market yet. So, I don't really know where it stands. I just know that we all have to proceed as if it's not sold or not being sold, because we still need to make sure that, um, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, like I said, I was, I was over there the last couple of days. There was some barking this morning at 8:30. It was quiet at 5:30. It was not. So, I'm hoping that things aren't as loud as they were last year.
With the, the property and, and the matter is in litigation, can we still contact her and ask her what the status is, or do we stay away from it completely?
Um, I think you can, you can, but I, I'd like to just note that the licensing aspect of it with Boris Lekman is, is not affected by the litigation, and it's, it's really legally separate.
Quick to know.
Um, so it wouldn't impede the selectmen in dealing with the license at all. I don't think the appeal relates to the license at all, the litigation, so...
Yes, I don't believe it does.
So, that doesn't affect the licensing.
Does she have, does she have the 25 dogs or more?
I don't know, because we haven't been over there, but I, I mean, from somebody who sat in the driveway for many times last year...
Once or twice.
It doesn't seem like there's as many dogs as there were last year, just from my ear, but I can't.
Well, then, how would the board feel about sending a letter to the applicant, Mrs. Chote, in, in response to her May 31st letter, saying that to please be advised that your, as you had requested, the hearing regarding your property, will be continued until the, such time with the lawsuit and litigation is resolved with the town and other, and other parties. Until such time, we would request that you keep, you inform the board of regarding the, the final sale and disposition of the property as of today.
I'm going to say, is it?
I don't know, as a board with the litigation, I would just prefer to stay away from it, to be honest with you.
Find out if it does.
Yeah, well...
But that can be done, so if animals...
Yeah, that, that, I think that's, I think keeping us aware, the letter should just reflect, you know, to keep us aware of what is the status of the property, if in fact a purchase and sale or agreement is, has been finalized and is the property moving forward with the sale, something to that effect. Uh, how's that, do, can I, do we need a motion or something like that, or we'll just send that off as the board?
Send it off.
Yeah, we'll just send that. That'd be great. Okay?
Okay.
Cool. We done? What else do we have?
Now we get paid.
Mr. Huxman, thanks so much for driving out here.
My pleasure.
I appreciate your help. I'm sorry we had to run you around in circles like that.
It's my pleasure, and I'll put it in my calendar for August.
I would greatly appreciate that, if you, if you could do that. It'd be so helpful to be able to interpret both sides from the legal aspect, because certainly we'd be ill-prepared to do that.
Definitely, and don't hesitate to give me a call if you want to...
Oh, great.
Discuss it.
Appreciate that. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to end the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, and Terry and everybody.